Welcome to our meeting. The date is July 15, 2025. The time is 6:00 PM. This is a city council study session meeting regarding the budget. This is an open meeting of the Grand Island City Council. The City of Grand Island abides by the Open Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is displayed in the back of this room as required by state law. I ask that you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The city clerk will now perform roll call.
Council President Sheard.
Present.
Councilmember Stelk.
Present.
Councilmember Conley.
Present.
Councilmember Nickerson.
Present.
Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Hossi, Mendoza, O'Neal, and Lanfair will be absent. Councilmember Pollock.
Present.
And Mayor Still.
Present. Also present are Jill Grenier, the city clerk, Laura McAlune, the city administrator, Patrick Brown, the assistant city administrator and chief financial officer, and Carrie Fisk, the city attorney. A sign-up sheet was available in the lobby for individuals wishing to provide input on any of tonight's agenda items. If you did not sign up to speak on an agenda item, please come forward, state your name, and the agenda topic on which you will be speaking. No one has come forward, so we shall continue. The first item for discussion is 5A Fiscal Year 2026 Mayor, City Council Administration, Legal, City Hall, and Clerk Budget Proposal. Good evening, Mr. Brown.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Tonight, we're going over the legislation part of this, city administration, human resource, and the crowd favorite of fire and ambulance. So, administration. So, total operating expenses decrease of 18.7% or $25,000. That's due to a $25,000 reduction in contract services, and that $25,000 was to pay for strategic planning this current year. Total personnel expense decrease of 26%. That has to do with the splitting of the assistant city administrator position. This currently, this year, it was 70-30, 70% administration, 30% finance. With the turnover we've had in finance for fiscal year '26, we're going to reverse that, have 70% finance and 30% administration. Any questions? Okay. Mayor and city council budget presentation, really no changes to the compensation. That compensation can be changed anytime during the year if so desired, but would not take effect until the next seating of a new council member or new election. Travel, training, and other expenditures decrease of $3,000 down to $7,000. Mike.
Yeah, Brad, on the... Compensation. Is there any way that we can write a new code or resolution to increase the pay of a like that's $200 a month? I got the look, and it was 2014 the last time there was any kind of pay increase for the mayor or the council. And I know some people say yes, some people say no. We're about $3,000 behind our comparables, and someday, we're going to have to catch up, and then it's going to really be bad.
I would agree that your, this body is underpaid. So, but it is a city council decision.
Yeah, and I...
And so, I'll leave that to Carrie to answer the resolution question.
So, the legal answer is that you can vote to change your pay at any point in time. That pay rate cannot take effect until the next time a new council member is seated after election. So, the earliest it would actually take effect would be December of 2026. So, you can work on that project as time goes. It wouldn't affect this fiscal year's budget, though, even if passed. So, we can definitely start that process and get you those template changes to make, but it wouldn't impact his budget.
So, we are looking at a year, December 2026.
Yeah, yeah, whenever the next council member is seated by election.
That's what I got out of the statute, too. So, if we could look at that, see what it's going to cost us, see how much strain that is going to put on the budget. I know there's plenty of people that drive around and look at every project that comes out, and I know that more than mileage is used up in $200 a month. But, that's just me. I don't know what the rest of you do, but that'll give you something to chew on for a year and two months.
Mr. Nickerson.
When you're reducing travel, training, and other expenses, is that an account that just really isn't getting used much at all?
Right.
So, we've got, and that's an entire year's budget, the $7,000?
It will, well, depending if you agree with that, yes. Right now, it's 10.
Currently, it's 10, but through all that, and that would be going to conferences. Nobody goes to the national conference anymore, I don't think. Some go to Lincoln. So, really, you know, I, as a council member myself, I have not gone for years and years. There was a period of time where I was. I don't know if that's something, obviously, I think you may want to encourage that, especially with newer people. But $7,000, if it hasn't really been tapped much, you know, at the $10,000 level, $7,000 apparently is more than adequate, based on what you've seen.
Yes. I mean, we can keep it at 10. It's, you know, just trying to save budget savings.
Well, and we're also looking at what's actually been spent. We did have, I mean, kudos to our newest council members. They did attend the league trainings and conferences. Councilmember Hossi, I think, attended this year. But even with all of that, we've spent about $2,000 of the $10,000 budget, and we are pushing out all of, we're providing you with as much information as we can about the available national and state opportunities for you to participate in National League of Cities and League of Nebraska Municipalities conferences, but we can't twist anybody's arm and force them to go. But we want, that's why we are recommending reducing it to $7,000, even though probably total year's budget spend is going to be about three.
And I, and that's what I expected. I remember going to some of the national municipal league of cities, I think, or whatever it's called, at Washington DC, which was very, very good. It was good to go. It's not something I'd want to do every year, but I would just encourage anyone here who has not done that. It's a great opportunity to go be part of that conference and also get to see the Capitol of the United States, which is a pretty awesome place to see. So, I know, I just, it's just one of those things, I don't, I'm guilty of not going, and I understand why we'd want to use the, we'd want to reduce it if it's not showing, but also want to encourage people to use that because it is very good. It's good for us.
Go ahead, Mr. Sheard.
On the compensation, when someone files for election, they pay that same amount as a percentage, right? So, I think it was, for us, it was $78.
10%.
1%, right?
No, 1%, yeah.
Yeah, 1%.
Yeah.
So, that would go up as well, right?
Yes.
But that's a, I don't think that's going to prevent somebody as much as, as Mike was saying, it's behind on what, I've talked to a few other council members that would agree that it's time, probably, to at least bring that in front of us. So, I like to hear that that's coming sooner rather than '26, you said?
Yeah, it wouldn't take effect until December of '26.
When do we need to act?
Before December of '26.
When would you prefer?
It would be perfect.
When would you prefer we act?
The next budget, the next budget session.
Gotcha.
So, which would be June, July of '26.
This time next year.
Six, yes.
Ideally speaking, you do it a little before that, before that filing deadline. So, ideally, you would start kind of having that conversation over the next probably six months, so that way, the law can be in place. It just won't take effect until that time. So, ideally, probably over the next six months, so that way, it's there, ready before the budget time.
Would the folks that are running next time have to pay that new amount?
If it's passed before the filing deadline.
Okay.
So, it'd probably be good to do it in November, December of '25.
Mr. Still.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to compare what Mike said. I'd like to look at a comparable on what the other Class 1 cities are making and doing. That's just my input on it. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Mark. Thanks, Jack. Mike.
Maybe we could have Carrie compile a list and email it to us, if possible?
So, actually, Aaron, Human Resources has already done that, and I thought he shared it with you, Mike, earlier this week. But you're about three, let me pull up the spreadsheet.
I know we're over $3,000.
$2,590 below market. So, the annual salary or annual stipend for an elected at market rate would be $10,390. So, that would be that increase from $7,800. That's what is in our array that Aaron has already studied. So, we did already gather that data. We have it available for you. But since it wouldn't be able to go into effect with this budget, we were not bringing that as part of the budget presentations for fiscal year '26.
Thanks, Pat.
You bet. Legal Department. Personnel expense increase of 5%. That is at current staffing. Legal has submitted an FTE request and associated expenses due to the current workload and anticipated increase of cases from GIPD. The attorney cost, FTE full cost, is $207,838, and that would be a 43% increase. Jack.
What have been some of the current workload increases that we've experienced?
So, generally, since the city moved from one attorney to two attorneys, the population has just shy of doubled. Our staffing levels have increased. So, assessing how much a workload for an attorney is is kind of hard. It's not like Human Resources where we can say for every 100 employees, you need one extra person. Every, I mean, literally, everything you pass and do adds. The most market and tangible increase has been in the prosecution functions in the caseload that's coming in from GIPD. A pretty positive change, even just over the last six months, they've nearly doubled the number of traffic cases and traffic stops they're doing. Of course, everything that they do funnels to another entity. In our case, anytime they increase traffic enforcement or any sort of code enforcement, those tickets all come in here. So, there, as they've gotten to full staff and started really working on things, that all kind of funnels to us. So, that's been probably the biggest spike. And then, if they continue to add capacity or reorganize capacity, of course, all that work comes somewhere. So, it's a little bit soft, but that is generally what has got that trend going, just regular population growth, increased workload growth, and then being a full staffing and the work that all those officers are doing. We have to give them a home for those tickets, so.
Thank you.
My question is along those lines because I guess I just really, is the $207,000 for an additional person?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That includes benefits.
Yeah, and that's what I would like to really understand, that data and see it more on an assumption it might get bigger, you know, before you, you know, you don't want to staff a full-time person that you're not going to keep busy. And like all these things that come into us when we're looking for FTE increases, we need to really support logically the need for them, but you're, you're trying to project what might happen out here when we don't know what might happen out here. Also need to understand the chief's side of it. Also need to understand the tickets that are initiated. What does that really mean for your time? What does that, does everything go through a court system only when it's appealed? Is it just an automatic thing that once they're guilty, they pay the fine? I mean, I don't, I don't really know what all that means.
And so, the tickets are a portion of that increased workload. From what I can find, it looks like various city attorneys in the past have been requesting a third attorney since the early 2000s. At one point in time, the city attorney's office did have three full-time attorneys. It looks like maybe the last recession through that head, when there had been a lot of other reorganizations, that had fallen. Out of all of our comparable entities, they all have between three and six attorneys on staff for the ones that we're comparing to for salary. As far as the tickets go, of course, each one of those tickets comes, every ticket that GIPD writes for a city code violation comes in, gets processed by, gets reviewed by, most times Stacy comes in and reviews them, gets processed through by the staff members, gets assigned a court date. Some of that navigation is done before court, and then that requires an actual court appearance. The actual minutes that takes vary wildly, depending on the type of case. If I give you a no, you get a no registration ticket, that may be a almost minimal time for us. If it's a juvenile who has a no tobacco case that messes up their probation, that might be very time-consuming. So, it's kind of a steady incremental little, every little thing we do adds a fraction of a percent to that workload. Over time, it just results in, I mean, just delays. When somebody comes to us with a question or a need and starts to wait longer and longer and longer, we've hit that point where we're typically running behind on almost every request because they're just coming in at a volume that we can't keep up with. It did look a bit, we looked and explored what it would be to contract that work out. The reality is that a contract-out attorney is running somewhere between $150 and $400 an hour, depending on the type of work. So, in-house or out-of-house, the costs are fairly similar. It does look like in the early, about 2010 or so, that there was exploration to contract out the entire department to a private firm, and that was actually almost double the cost of what having it in-house was. So, I mean, there are, there are options to continue to contract out work to get faster timelines. On prosecution of tickets, that tends to be very difficult and expensive because any attorney who takes that can't defend any criminal stuff. So, we wipe somebody out of the private market, so they tend to not take those. When we need outside prosecution help, we typically have to go to another prosecution agency who will take a ticket here and there. They won't take $5,000 in a year, so.
Well, that was my question about what can you contract? Because you should be able to pick and choose what you, what you want to do and what you hand off, I would think. And so, I don't know that it's $200,000 a year to have somebody on retainer or per-hour request. To me, I would, and to compare ourselves to other cities and say, well, they've got six attorneys, we've only got two and a paralegal.
Sometimes it's apples and oranges, yeah.
You know, it's, yeah, it's like, well, good for us if we're able to do the load. I don't know what that big thing is going out there. That's huge. Huge military truck going down our street right now. Thought it's maybe the police chief's new addition to his fleet. Anyway, it just seems to me like 200 grand is a big ask without really data supporting that. I understand your job is to try to plan. I would like to see, plus, we have a paralegal we've added, which was supposed to help take some of the burden off of Stacy. And I don't know when it comes to a city attorney versus an assistant city attorney, who gets what cases and who does what. Because you've got two people now under the attorney title, but we also have a paralegal, which is able to do a lot of the paperwork. So, I'm trying to understand how that all...
And to give you a rough idea, in the last three years, GIPD has almost doubled the number of traffic citations that they're giving. This year alone, they've already written more tickets year-to-date this year than they had at this point in time in 2021. So, I mean, they're great problems to have. We're more active. They're fully staffed. I think back then, they were down a lot of officers. So, again, it's kind of an incremental load. The reality is, part-time attorneys don't exist. So, the ability to contract out a half-time person, I mean, we could try. We could advertise for it and see what we get.
I think every attorney in this town is book solid. I mean, I'm sure there's some that would like to have some additional business.
Yeah, but there's a lot of those cases they couldn't take because they'd be conflicted out. There are statutory regulations. If you prosecute, for example, if we were to give out those tickets, they cannot defend, they can't do any criminal defense work, for example. So, the ability to get somebody to do it, I mean, we could attempt to do it. Even then, when you're contracting out, you're paying a significantly higher hourly rate than the salary and benefits because you're also covering their malpractice insurance. You're covering their office overhead. So, right now, we tend to contract out specialty work, things like bond counsel, some of those, the insurance work there. When you're in non-specialty work, it becomes harder to. We could, we could definitely explore it. I doubt it would represent any cost savings. As far as that type of cases that would go, I would anticipate, and the goal would be to hire an entry level, so to be at the bottom of that cost. And I, and I can't remember, Pat can correct me if I'm wrong. I think that 207 is step five, maybe, with the benefits. So, ideally, that would be a lower number. The workload that I would anticipate assigning would be much more entry level. So, we ideally would be there. Of course, that can, that depends on what your applicant pool looks like, and I just don't know what your applicant pool would look like. So, it's, I mean, and then again, trying to figure out, would they just do that? Would they also do a lot of the other contract work? Just the volume of work has, as the population has grown, as Grand Island grows. Of course, every development you do is paperwork that comes through us. So, again, no big, huge, this project is what's causing this. I mean, it's not just GIPD's tickets. It's not just development. It's a little bit of everything, and when everything that comes through you adds legal work as time goes, it's either more people or longer delays. And we don't want to be what holds up growth and progress waiting on things, but.
Sure. Okay, and I see police chiefs come in. Mike picked his brain for a little bit. Chief, with the increase in traffic tickets, I know your heart is enforcing traffic enforcement more and all of that good stuff. So, what's that meaning to us as a city now, that the focus that you've been doing?
Right. Well, visible patrol's been one of our initiatives this year with our full staffing coming back, new officers on the street. They're a lot more aggressive as far as quantity goes. Our general numbers in 2024 were about just under 10,000 traffic stops. Our ticket ratio on those traffic stops was around 20%. That may be one ticket per stop, or in that 20%, maybe one ticket issued, maybe a couple tickets issued. So, you can do the math on 10,000 and 20%. Our traffic stop rate that we're looking at this year is probably going to be about 13,000 to 14,000 traffic stops. I anticipate that the percentage of citations issued would be about the same percentage. I don't know what, how many code enforcement, how many code enforcement officers write, how many tickets they write. I don't have those numbers with me.
Right. Okay, just trying to understand what's driving the request. And I, all of us want more help. I don't, and I, and so, you're going back to the comparison. And I always, always say that, you know, we're always comparing ourselves to other people and other groups, but there's something to be said, if we're able to manage the load. I think there's something to be said for efficiencies in government, that you're able to do it, and the others choose not to, or they just have a council that's more liberal and says, hey, go for it. I don't know what goes in those decisions, but I think Grand Island has a lot to be proud of because we are more efficient in many ways in a lot of our departments. Sometimes we're forced to do that. Sometimes it's just you have to do it, which is what, I guess, what forced means. But then there's other times we just, maybe we just naturally do it because we know that's how good we are. So, I'm, I'm not saying it's not needed. I'm just saying that I would sure like to understand the supporting data, you know, not just, I think this is where we're heading, and I want to bring a new body. I would almost rather see you do the contracting thing for a year to support whether you really need it or not going forward, and then make a decision in the next budget cycle. I guess that's maybe what I'm really looking for.
As far as, as far as that data goes, it looks like the nearest state. Members, as far as the citations issued, traffic, other code enforcement, we're on track. It'll be 4,800, whereas a couple, whereas it was at 2,100. So, we're there, I mean, they're plugging away.
It's doubled, more than doubled, yeah.
I would say that the contracting, too, we could definitely kick that out and do that. That requires money to pay that contract as well. So, whatever bucket, whether that comes in a payroll bucket or comes in a contract bucket, that is there. And we are, we are, to be very candid, in that awkward middle, where there is too much for two people to do everything right, well, and timely. Can we triage through? Yes. What that results in, though, is my office repeatedly telling whoever comes with a request, I know this is an emergency for you. You want this for next council meeting. I'm looking at a month out because somebody has a more emergent issue. That tends to cause cascading, when everything chokeholds at the legal department, that can cause cascading delays in other people's projects getting done. And so, we'd like to avoid that, be able to provide that good, quality, timely service that takes people, hours, resources. So, I mean, and I, everybody has those sorts of needs, those sorts of wants. So, I definitely understand that balance there. That's just kind of why we've been asking, is that that workload has incrementally crept up, and it's resulting in a delay. Traffic ticket-wise, for example, one of the worst, we don't want them writing a bunch of tickets that we are not filing in court, saying, you get out of your ticket because we're too busy to do your stuff. So, that's, they're a little more pressing. I can tell, you know, Chief Denny, sorry, you have to wait three more weeks on your contract review. I don't want to tell him, sorry, those tickets you wrote for the last three weeks, we don't have the capacity to prosecute them. So, again, it's a balance. It's a, you know, it's a trade. And if the answer that we need to give them is, please stop writing traffic tickets. We don't have the capacity to prosecute them, I don't know that that serves the cities.
No, we don't.
Interest very well, but, but can we? Yes, we could. And some cities have done that. Some cities do not push that and do that as much, remove things from code.
Oh, I understand, and that's where the chief is really wanting to keep an eye on traffic control. And I'm interested in city administrators' comments because, being an attorney, that background, any other input that she's got for it, I'd be interested in hearing as well.
The office is obviously much more than just prosecuting the traffic infractions or the code enforcement matters. And the balanced side of that is the city attorney's office actually for last, well, not the last, but for about a four-year period of time operated with one attorney and then has only been at full staffing really for the last two years. So, there's that. But one thing that we could do to be able to gather that data for you is to have our legal team start tracking their time on cases. There are a number of jurisdictions that do that in order to be able to track how do these, how much money, how much time is the, are we spending on prosecution? How much time are we spending on contracts review? We have a very complex utilities department with the FERC regulatory scheme. So, how much time does that department use legal? So, I think we could probably, pretty cost-effectively, get a time-tracking system and have the attorneys and the paralegal use that. Plus, I think as the paralegal becomes more skilled and experienced, things like basic contract review and drafting will be able to be passed off to the paralegal. That was the goal of creating that position and funding it. So, I do think that there's opportunities in the next year to be able to track actual hours spent on the different types of work that comes out of our legal department. We have a great legal department. They try to be as responsive as they can, but certainly what Ms. Fisk is saying in that departments are having to be told, I have other higher priority things I have to do before I can get to your contract that's happening. So, but there's also a lot more oversight, to be honest, from the legal department than I think what Grand Island has had in the past with just one attorney being, doing the work. I think things had to get set by the... I think things had to get set by the wayside and allowed to not go through the legal department. And we've seen some of, some negative impacts from that, frankly. So, there's pros and cons to both of it, both sides of it. I certainly rely on my department heads to tell me what they think is best for their department. But I think if, if there is an area where we can improve here, it's in gathering the data to support the actual hours spent on the different types of tasks. And that's a, that's a pretty cost-effective way to do it. The other comment I'd make is Nebraska is experiencing, as are a number of other states and, but especially Midwest states, experience a lawyer shortage. So, even hiring someone is going to be a big uphill battle. Hiring a contract attorney, that's certainly one of the things that I suggested. But there are, the, the pool of attorneys in Grand Island is much smaller than it was many years ago. So, it's, it's a number of reasons that kind of, number of things that impact the analysis here.
Mr. Still.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I talk to people around town, first they talk about how great Grand Island looks and we're doing with the business improvement projects going on. The, the second thing that always comes up is the number of people that are speeding, drag racing, and that. And there's a, they've, they've noticed a downhill tick on that. I think there's a definite correlation between the number of tickets issued and the people keeping their foot off the pedal. And I think that's something I want to see continued. I like to see the enforcement out there on the streets. The, the last thing I like is driving down the street and having some, some big pickup on your bumper. And usually, I just pull over because they, they don't want, they don't want an old man in front of them, so. But...
All right, I'll back you.
The, the other thing is the police force has some really excellent crime-fighting expertise. We have really sharp people, and I've heard them talk about the sex trafficking and the cases that are going on there. And we need to continue that trend and continue that work to protect our kids and the, protect the children playing in the parks. I mean, that's, that's a brutal society out there. There's a bunch of creeps. And, you know, last night I was at Donovan Council Meeting on Grand Generation Center work. And they have a, a guy in town that's stalking people. And so, that they've gotten, at last night's meeting, they got the county sheriff involved in that. But there's stuff like that going on all the time that we need to protect our people, especially the most vulnerable people, our children. Thank you.
Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. I guess my question would be if Chief Denny keeps doing what he's doing, and we continue to have more tickets and more of the things that Mark was talking about, and more come, more cases come, isn't there a cost offset in some way, or does Chief Denny get to keep all of that? When they make an arrest or write a ticket, does he get it all, or does some of that come down to legal?
So, some of those tickets cost more to handle than others. On average, for example, a ticket costs $50, $49 to file. Some of those, if you take stop class, for example, we may recover almost all of those costs. Some of those tickets, we recover none of them juveniles, for example. So, it's pretty hard to say per ticket what a, what a, what a cost and a time impact is. In the end, that, that revenue, for example, if you get a speeding ticket, half of that goes to the common school funds and actually offsets school money. The rest of it goes into general fund. None of it, in no scenario do writing speeding tickets create profit either for the police department or for the, the legal department. The benefit we get is a safer community. It doesn't really make us, it's not a revenue-producing task for the most part. So...
I may add two things. One is I have not seen an increase in my paycheck, as far as that goes. The other one is, I, to explain it a little bit further, one of our pillars, one of our four pillars is visible patrol. And visible patrol means more red and blue lights out there making traffic stops. One of the benefits of that as well, because I, I would say ticket writing has remained percentage-wise the same. But one of the benefits is that our traffic stops are up so far this year compared to last year, about 86%, which is very significant. However, I think that's related to a reduction in our accident rates as well. So, our accidents so far this year are down about 11%, which is a side benefit of those red and blue lights stopping a few more cars out there.
And, and don't get me wrong, I want that. And there's so many benefits, and there's cost savings that we'd probably, we have some number crunchers who could probably figure out those things, and there's statistics that say that. But I was just wondering, is there a fee structure or something that, you know, you're talking about adding $200,000 for some of the workload that you're talking about? And those applications that you talk about, that people have, that you have to review, are we charging, I hate to say this, I'm going to get a dirty look, but are we charging enough in fees to cover the processing of all these things?
Not, and not in the sense, not in the sense that we bill hourly for our work, for example. I think we're buried in, for example, for utilities, in that just general administrative payment that comes through. So, I, I think that's why we're a general fund administrative services department, like HR and the clerk's office, where we don't really, we're not getting billed out to a department or to a particular cause. We're just here to support everybody, and that that may even flow.
But when we, when we have a filing fee for something, that go, that fee is supposed to cover something.
Yeah, it, it doesn't come back into my budget. It, does it come back, some of that does come back to the city. But, and Pat can tell me where it goes. I know it doesn't show back up as a revenue line in my budget. I don't know where in general. Well, yes, but that general fund that goes, that general fund that goes back eventually is in the same pot that my budget comes out of. I just don't personally know where that goes.
Pat, yeah, I think you can speak it. The, the fees that we collect on infractions are required to be paid to the school district by state law.
But I'm talking about application fees for things that she talked about, processing or things that are reviewed by legal. Do you think there might be a fee? Where do those fees go to?
Jack, are you talking about like billing out departments?
Well, you mentioned there was applications.
Like if we review a TIF, a TIF contract, for example, that application fee goes, typically, most of those things that we might review, they go to the various departments that charge them, that we're not scraping off a portion of that fee there. So, it's coming into the city's general pot, but not necessarily.
They go into the general fund, which...
Which comes back to us.
...pays for that department.
So, what we do is, you'll notice when we, when I do non-departmental, you'll see some revenue accounts called admin fees. And these admin fees, these are fees paid by like the enterprise funds for Laura's time, my time, Carrie's time. And it's just a formula that was developed actually in 2009 that honestly needs to be revisited. But all those funds pay into the general fund because, you know, they're, they're getting benefit from all of our services, even, even the city clerk, you know, because hers touches every department. So, we do have that.
So, it would, it would stand to reason that as the workload goes up, there are city revenues in some bucket or another that are also adding to, maybe not $207,000 a year.
Right. Admin fees would go up. So, your wastewater, your electric, your water, solid waste. Admin charges would go up because that's an added cost on, to the services that they are providing. Does that make sense? We're, we're spreading the cost around, not just the general fund, but spreading the cost to other funds. They pay into the general fund, which pays for that.
I guess what I'm saying is, and maybe you're saying the same thing, but if crime goes up or prosecution of crime goes up, there's more people that are paying tickets or paying fees, some of which would go to somewhere else, not us.
Right. That fee to us is very, very small.
Very small.
And, and this discussion actually points out why many jurisdictions do use a time-keeping system for their city attorney's offices, because otherwise you're just speculating on, and you're using anecdotal reports to say, we're seeing an increase in contracts from the finance department or from the IT department. If you're tracking the time spent, then there is quantifiable data to show what is a department's impact. Do we need to increase our fees for building permits if we're seeing an increase in the workload caused by the building department for that? Do we need to increase our fines and penalties for code enforcement if we're seeing an increase in workload for the legal department because of increased code enforcement? So, that, that's why the time-tracking makes sense in my mind, because then you really have data to show. Here's, here's where the work is being spent. Here's where we need, here's the expertise we need to add to the team in order to address that workload, and here's how many hours we need.
Is it reasonable to have that in place before we make this budget?
That's a software system, and they are, I mean, there are pretty pricey ones, but there's also pretty basic, simple ones. You can also just do it with an Excel spreadsheet. Law firms everywhere figure out how to track their firm, their, their, their fees, right, their, how often they work. All, all we would be doing is asking the legal department to track the time that they spend for each department on, on work, the same way a private. And, and like I said, many governmental city attorney offices do that.
I think that's a really good place to start.
This is the problem we've caused by giving Chief Denny all the help he needs.
I agree with you.
That's, that's exactly what it's from. Now they're, now they're out there doing their job, and it trickles downhill. It's just exactly what happened. And if you want to see what they're doing, every morning there's a report of encounters that they have with citizens. And it's gone up tremendously on the traffic stops over the last two years. So, you know, we kind of caused our own problem, but it's a good problem to have. Thank you.
I'd echo that, that all of these growth problems are, whether it's reviewing contracts because we're building so many more apartment buildings, or bringing, all of these are great problems. Busy, busy lawyers in this context actually has been a good thing. It's not always a good thing when lawyers are busy. But all of our growth in every department and all those contracts is, is a wonderful sign. We're growing, not stagnating. So, they're great problems to have. Problems, but wonderful problems to have.
Exactly.
Okay, so, the second half of this is increase in operating expenses, and that would be associated with the added attorney if we go that direction. City Clerk's Office, there was a mistake in the packet, and I have corrected it here on the, on the screen. So, personnel expenses increased 7.4%. That's just step increases. Operating expenses decreased 56.3. That's due to no election this year. So, that was a decrease of $80,000. Our legal notices have gone up in, in what we're putting into the paper. So, something we cannot control. City Hall, this would be maintenance of the City Hall facility. Personnel expenses going down 11.9. This was a decrease because of health insurance. When we, when we have vacancies, we had a vacancy last year during the budget season. When we have that vacancy, we always use the highest insurance rate premium. And in this situation, the person did not elect to have this insurance. Operating expenses decreased 2.7% or, or $6,800. Decrease in repair and maintenance of office furniture and equipment, decrease in miscellaneous operating equipment. Any questions? And that is it. And human resources next.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Next up is fiscal year 2026 human resource budget proposal. Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Not a whole lot on, on my department, pretty short and sweet. But personnel services, you see a decrease of 3.73%. Kind of like Pat just mentioned with the insurance, we hired a recruiter who chose not to take our insurance. So, we had initially overbudgeted, so this is a correction. No, no FTE requests, and we will have a HR specialist who will be retiring this year. I talked her into another year last year, but I don't think I'm going to do it again this year. So, looks, looks real this time. So, we'll be backfilling that eventually. Operating expenses increased 6.61%, roughly $12,000. Most of it's just increases in office supplies. We'll go through a lot of toner. Miscellaneous operating expenses, equipment. We do have a IAFF labor negotiation next year, so we'll do some wage study costs associated with that. So, budget overall, a 1.27% decrease, so about $11,000. And then no capital projects or no capital equipment. So, any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Short and sweet. Thank you.
Lastly, fiscal year 2026 fire and ambulance budget proposal. Good afternoon, Chief. Please present for us.
Sure. I can figure out what I'm doing here. Maybe. There. Okay, thanks. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm here to present the fiscal year 2026 budget. And we're excited about it. Before I get into that, I want to thank you all for your support. I think the Fire Department has a lot of great things that are currently going on. We have our, just over $2.3 million ladder truck that will be here tomorrow at Station One at 4:00 PM. So, you're all welcome to come check it out, along with some promotional ceremonies. So, we're really excited. And then as part of our budget presentation, I'll talk about some of the other highlights. Overall, personnel costs on the fire side, and again, just to back up a, a bit, our budget internally is broke down into two sections, fire and ambulance. As far as fire, we're looking at a 3.7% increase. And in that increase, I'm asking for an additional $100,000 in overtime. I know that sounds like a big number, but a few years ago, I came to council and requested permission to tap into USAR, to become a partner agency with USAR. And the way USAR or Nebraska Task Force One works, we send our people, we pay them, they reimburse us. And year-to-date, we've spent approximately $50,000 in overtime supporting USAR. It is reimbursed to us in time. And we currently have one of our employees that's working the, the floods in, in Texas. And those folks have a very difficult job. In the end, I, even though it's a terrible experience, it's a good amount of experience that we can use locally should we ever have to go through something like that. So, the reason that overtime expenses, as high as it is, a lot of it is reimbursed. And then in addition to that, obviously, wages have increased over the years. We haven't increased that overtime expense the same percentage as the wage increase has happened. So, we're a little bit behind. And if you look at our budget over the last few years, we've been way over an overtime budget, but part of that is also due to open positions. Same thing with ambulance. We're asking for a $25,000 in overtime increase. And overall, the ambulance budget is looking at a 1.5% decrease in personnel costs. And I'm not certain the reason. I, I need to work with Pat on that. But back when we split our budget into two chunks, we assigned a certain number of people to fire and a certain number of people to ambulance. And over the last couple of years, we've had a rotation of some people. We've had people retire. We've had people retire that were top pay, and we brought in people that were bottom pay. And I'm speculating that the people assigned to the ambulance division, some of the top-paid people have moved on, and we've hired some lower-paid people, which accounts for that decrease. The clothing allowance on both of those, due to an issue last year, our clothing allowance was basically omitted from our budget. So even though this is like a huge increase, it's really getting us back to what we're obligated to through the union contract. There's an issue, I'm not sure who caused what, but it looks worse than what it is. This was normally in our budget. It wasn't in there last year, so it looks like a very big increase because of it. Operationally, Pat gave us a target and said, here's how much operationally you can increase. I don't know what percentage that was.
10%.
10%. We had a couple bigger ticket items in that, and those bigger ticket items are listed. The largest one is due to contract services, and there are several items in contract services, the largest of which is FirstDue, which is a new software that we had for a capital project last year. But FirstDue is going to replace our fire report writing, our ambulance report writing, our internal scheduling, our training software, our inspection program, just a number of things. So we've consolidated a bunch of random programs into one master program provider, and FirstDue is the big driver. That increase in FirstDue was around $25,000. The other increase is due to an operational, contractual agreement with Stryker for medical maintenance on our COTS, Cardac monitors, and Lucas devices. The next big one there is computer services. The fire stations have long struggled with slow network speeds, and what we did was we partnered with ALO Fiber, and ALO is going to provide the internet service to three of the four fire stations. And each fire station, that cost is about $4,140 per year. It's not a private service. The city has partnered with them to use their fiber lines that originate here, so it's still city network, but it's using fiber from ALO to transmit that signal to the fire stations. And it's in place at Station One. It's greatly improved the reliability of our internet, and I think it's a very good investment and probably long overdue. The next one, equipment services. One of the things that we had about two years ago was new air packs. Those air packs, according to the manufacturer, have to be flow-tested annually. That cost there, the bulk of that is made up of that increased cost due to air pack flow testing. Vehicle repairs, that increase is requested due to actual expenses we've been seeing on our fleet. Years ago, when we started replacing fire engines and ambulances on a pretty regular basis, I was hoping to see those costs go down, but as you all know, the newer vehicles are more electronically controlled, and there's a lot of diesel issues, and the cost to repair those is quite high. So that request is based on, again, actual expenses that we're seeing. Travel and training for the paramedic program, as you might recall, a few years back, we've made a switch from trying to recruit paramedics to fill paramedic slots to hiring firefighters and train them to become paramedics. That increase is roughly the amount to train one additional person to become a paramedic. We currently have about five people in the paramedic program that should be completing the program within this calendar year, so that program's paying off. We're still a little short on paramedics, but that's the cost of attracting paramedics is to find good people and pay for their education to help them become a paramedic, which also leads a little bit to the overtime, because overtime to attend class is how we make that possible. Oftentimes, our people are at work, they have to attend CCC for an in-person class, we have to find backfield to come in, take their place while they go to class. So they all tie together. And then utilities, I'm hoping this doesn't need to go up as high as it is, but we're just guessing on the new Fire Station Three with the square footage, it needs to go up, and we're looking at the actual cost at the other current stations, and there's an upward trend in usage, or not usage so much as the cost associated with that usage. So that's where that request is coming from.
But back on the training and paramedics, are you anticipating a lower turnover rate long-term, or have you seen that already with some of the programs you put in place like that?
I think about 20 to 30 years ago, when I started and a little bit after, we hired a whole bunch of people. And most of them are getting to the age where they're looking to retire, so we've had a higher-than-normal number of people to replace. I anticipate, right now, we have five people in a recruit class with three more openings that we're going to be hopefully filling in September, October timeframe. I think after we get through that October hiring process, we're going to see a whole lot less turnover. But we just hired a lot of people in and around the year 2000, and it's catching up with us.
But you're able to fill them, it looks like.
We are able to fill them, but again, we've really switched the way we think. Back when I started, we hired people that were EMTs or paramedics, had firefighting experience. Now, we're looking for good people that we can train to become a great firefighter, a great paramedic, a great EMT. So it's a little more expensive to get people, but the candidates out there that are experienced that have EMT or paramedic or firefighter one, they're few and far between anymore. Before, they were out there, now they're not, so we're having to put a little bit more into them. But fortunately, I think we have a pretty good culture. Once we get them in the door, for the most part, they really enjoy it, and they stick around and hopefully have a long and productive career. So it's slowing down.
We've got a good track record of keeping people a long time, so that says a lot. So, thank you.
Now I'm going to get into the capital projects. This is the other big thing I mentioned, Fire Station Three is moving right along. This $1.9 million was already allocated in a previous budget year. I anticipate that number to go down. The contractor is monthly requesting payment. There's some payments that are in process now, and another payment or two might come due before the end of the fiscal year, but I just wanted to put, it's currently, there's $1.9 million left in that fund that will most likely be spent on the Fire Station Three project. Fire Station Three, we had a construction meeting earlier today. They anticipate August 12th to be a punch list walkthrough by the architect. Shortly thereafter, we're going to seek occupancy permit from the building department, move our people from the old station into the new one, and then they're going to tear down the old station and finish the parking lot, which starts, once we move in, Phase Two starts, they have 90 days to complete Phase Two. So we're looking at October or November for a final done project, so it's moving right along. And it's been a very fun project to watch, but it's a very congested work site, for those of you that have ever been out there. It's pretty tight, so we're looking forward to moving into a new one, removing the old station, and getting everything finished up. Thermal imagers, our current thermal imagers, we have them on each fire engine, and ambulances do not have them. Our current ones are about 10 to 15 years old, depending on which models they are. They're starting to have very low battery life, it's time to replace them. We're asking for $30,000 to replace the thermal imagers on the frontline engines, and then buy some smaller ones for the frontline ambulances, so they also have them. In the past, as you all probably know, our ambulances also are staffed with firefighters. Sometimes they arrive first, and we want to give them the tools if there's an immediate rescue needed, where they can go in and start pulling people out of a fire if needed. So this $30,000 is to complete that project. Dive and water rescue, we're asking for $50,000, and I know I came to council late last year, earlier this year, and requested permission to apply for a grant to help with this. We haven't heard back from that grant. I think it's an important project, that's why I'm putting in the capital request. That way, if the grant does not come through, we at least have an option. And this request would pay for six to eight people, their training and the equipment needed to become a public safety diver. And fortunately, we applied for a grant with the St. Francis Foundation. They've agreed to give us $5,000, which I get that check given to the department on Thursday, so that's going to help a little bit with this project as well. So I think it's important, and the need is great, and as you know, Grand Island's a little prone to flooding, and we want to have the ability not only to rescue someone in swift water, but also to go subsurface if we have to do a body recovery or anything like that. Rope rescue and tech rescue, our current equipment was purchased back in 2004 with the help of assistance to firefighter grant. According to NFPA standards, a lot of the equipment that is soft, such as harnesses, anchors, ropes, should be replaced every 10 years. This new, newer standard came out just a few years ago, and we realized our equipment is 21 years old. And if you could put yourself in a harness and picture yourself hanging off of a very tall building, and equipment that should be okay, but the standards say you probably should buy new, that's where this is coming from. We're also planning on applying for another grant. Our grant writer, Libby, she does a great job. I think we got a pretty good shot at getting a grant. If we would get a grant, it would cost around $20,000 out of city dollars to replace this stuff. If not, the full price is $205. We're going to make sure and work with Pat that it's in our budget in such a way to where we're needing a grant to pay for this, and then move forward as needed, whether with grant or without. Staff vehicle, earlier this fiscal year in October, one of our inspectors, he was driving a hand-me-down Ford Taurus. That Taurus lasted a few years. Well, the engine finally went, so we had a newer Ford Taurus, which was a 2012. We assigned it to the inspector, now we're short a staff vehicle. A vehicle like this would be used to send our people to training out of town, it'd be used in town for staff, but we're basically short a vehicle, and this would get us back up to speed. I think this price is a little high. State bid on a Ford Explorer is around $40,000. We'd have to put in a P-25 compliant radio, which is about $10,000, and then get the lights and lettering. I put a little extra in in case inflation or something went haywire, but I think it would probably be closer to 60 or upper 50s. Ambulance, this was approved by city council in August of 2024. It would replace a 2009 model. It's already on order. It was one of those things where we knew it's going to take at least two years to get, so we got ahead of it. We've ordered it. There's a high probability it will not be here next budget year. If it is, I wanted the ability to pay for it when it showed up. That's where this request is coming, but just based on past timing, I'm guessing it'll be fiscal year '27, but we had to cover our bases. Cardiac monitors, this is one where we're kind of at the mercy of the manufacturers. And I say that because the state of Nebraska has a requirement for ambulance services to have their equipment inspected according to manufacturers' instructions. And the manufacturer of these, of our current cardiac monitors is Physio or now Stryker. And they said as of December 31st of 2025, they're no longer going to service these cardiac monitors. So we're at a point where unfortunately, to meet the state requirement, we have to replace our monitors. And the reason I put replace up to seven cardiac monitors, depending on which brand we go with, we may not be able to afford as many as I would like to see. So that's why there's that kind of vague language there, but we hope to replace seven. And the seven monitors are currently on each of our ambulances, and as you probably know, three of them are staffed, four of them are in backup. And we've oftentimes had five to six ambulances being used at one time, so we want to make sure if we have a cardiac patient, there is a working monitor on those units, just so our bases are covered. Same kind of issue here with our Lucas devices. We got these Lucas devices as part of the Helmsley Grant in 2015. They were free, the state had a great program, and unfortunately, as of the end of this year, they said they're no longer going to maintain this old model of Lucas. And for those of you that doesn't know what a Lucas is, the picture kind of shows it, but it does the cardiac or chest compressions for someone that's in cardiac arrest. We're requesting these dollars to replace two of those units, which are on our frontline ambulances. We have a total of four, but only two of them are needing replaced at this time. The other two models are quite a bit newer. And that is it.
Mr. Nickerson?
First of all, I'd like to thank you once again for your annual report. I know a lot of time and energy goes into this. I've not had a chance to read this yet, but I always appreciate the photos and everything that supports what the fire department's doing. I think it's well done, and I don't know if you're still primarily driving that, or if you have other people pulling.
Actually, I found someone that.
Delegated, huh?
Gullible enough to do it, and his name is Spencer.
Oh, super. No, it's great.
He did a great job.
No, and that's exactly what, it tells a story, and that's what you want. You want to tell a story, and.
Appreciate that.
I always enjoy that. I do have a question for Patrick, though, I'm going to wake him up over there, because I think you must have been in a really good mood when you told folks that they could look at a 10% increase on operating supplies. It must, I thought that was always like 3% to 5%, but what prompted a liberal 10%? I'm calling it liberal, but I'm sure there's some reasoning behind it.
Usually, yeah, it's low like that, but operating expenses aren't that big in a general fund, quite honestly. So if you're talking, you know, personnel, that's a whole bigger ballgame, because that's most of our expense. So I was anticipating supply chain issues, inflation, and, you know, what's going to go on. So I wanted to put that out there so they had enough room to buy whatever they needed.
I'm not complaining, I'm just intrigued.
Thanks, Pat.
Yeah, there you go. Questions follow up with what you've requested or what you're presenting today? Obviously, I'm just fascinated with the Lucas devices and what they do, and how that takes the burden off a person that typically would have to do that. The machine's doing it, doing it probably very well.
They do, and they say that the, it's the right depth and the right rate, which increases the probability of surviving a cardiac arrest. So it's not only easier for our folks, it's more consistent with better outcomes.
I think it's outstanding, and I'm glad that you're looking at replacing those. I do want you, and I remember when you were here several months ago talking about the dive and rescue equipment, I need you to just help us again understand why that's important, because I'm going to. I need you to just help us again understand why that's important, because I'm going to try to remember what you're telling me, but when we have a catastrophic tragedy, the people that have been qualified in the past to do that are not always readily available and hard to assemble, and the advantage of having people in your group do that just makes a lot of sense when there's emergencies. So just elaborate on why we're looking at that.
When I was here last time, one of the things I had mentioned was the current dive rescue team, which is amazing. They're great people, do a great job, but the average age of that group is in the 60s. And talking to the lead person, he said, "We can't find volunteers, and we're getting older, and we can't keep doing this." So I said, "Well, we're interested in helping out, not to push them out of the way, but to partner," and he was very excited about it. But I think one of the reasons we're interested is our people often go to scenes where someone has drowned. And our crews arrive, the bystanders are oftentimes loved ones, and they're expecting us to do something. And we know we can't save the patient, but we can sure try and bring closure. And I think a great example, this last spring, there was a person that slipped on the boat dock at Mormon Island. Our crews got called out there. There was a pickup truck hooked up to a boat with a trailer underneath the boat floating, the boat was floating above the trailer in the water. It had been there for hours. Our crews got called, and we assumed we knew what happened, but we had to assemble the dive team. They found a body eventually, someone it looked like slipped on the boat ramp, went under the water, and drowned. This request is just to help speed up that process. It's to help our people be able to call in a resource in a timely manner, and it's also to help aid a group that is really aging out, and volunteerism isn't quite what it used to be. So there's a need and a lack of volunteers to meet that need.
Right. If approved, which I certainly hope the council would see the benefit of this, how long would it take someone to be trained in the ability to do what you would want them to do?
We're looking at next spring, and there's a company out of Carney that offers it. They will come to us, or we might have to go to a different body of water to train, but we could probably get the actual certification within a couple weeks. There's some ongoing things that we would need to do, so many dives, we can maintain our skill, things like that, but really, the initial cost is just for the training cost itself, and it's pretty quick. Once we have the ability to do it, we'll move along fairly fast. One of the things I can say is one of our people currently is on the volunteer dive team, so he has a lot of knowledge related to it. He's spearheading our efforts to start it here, so we're just waiting for budget authority to do it and the right time of year to train and get comfortable with it.
Very good. And then lastly, you've been able to staff another ambulance, correct? Are you still able to do that? And if so, how's that going?
Well, that's kind of a tough question, but yes, we are able to staff it. It's going amazing. It's really broke up that workload, but because of our staffing level and open positions and people in training, we're having to maintain that ambulance with overtime people often, which is part of our overtime expense, which goes back to we need to fill positions, get paramedics, get them trained, and get them on staff. But I think if you talk to any of our current people, they would tell you that having that third ambulance has made a world of difference. We look at the call distribution amongst those three units, and it's in your book there as well, but the call breakdown and the number of calls per unit is fairly even. It's really spread that workload out and given us a little bit better response time, because we have ambulances now at Station One, Two, and Four, so they can get to most areas of Grand Island and some areas of the county much quicker than they could with two ambulances. But I think one of the biggest positives out of having a third staffed ambulance is the number of recalls has dropped. One of the things you heard me talk about in the past was, we're having these recalls because we have more calls than we have people. By having three ambulances in service, the recall level has dropped quite a bit because we have more people on staff to do it. So it's worked out great. Are we fully there yet? No, because of the overtime issue, but we're getting close. And I kind of struggled. I think I put this in service January 15th of this past year, and I wasn't sure whether to do or not, because even at that time, we were short on bodies. And I met with the paramedic group, met with the union, and said, "If you think we need this," which I know we do, "it's going to cost overtime, and you guys are going to have to be willing to work extra." And they said, "We don't care. We want it, because working an extra shift here and there is much better than running 20 calls per unit per day at times and getting just really behind on paperwork, stressed, and burned out." So it's been a great thing.
Very good. All righty, thank you, Chief.
Paul.
Yeah, Corey, when did you say they were going to quit working on the cardiac unit?
December 31st of 2025, yeah.
Those are kind of a neat thing. I got to see one in action. This, for a fire department budget, I think is a pretty lean budget. I've seen a lot, a lot more contention between everybody. I want to commend you for the work you guys have done. It's a good budget, I think. Thank you.
Yeah, and really, that's due to your all's support, and we've, I tried to do as good a job as I could forecasting major expenses, and you all have been very supportive there. And I think a great example is the ladder truck. Pat and I talked earlier today. He knew the ladder truck was a need five years ago, if not more, and that's going to help not take that, take that shock value out of it like we've done in the past, I think, you know, where you get hit with the unexpected $2 million cost, which no one wants to see.
Thank you, Chief. We've had a couple people come in after we started our meeting. Do either of you gentlemen wish to speak? Just come forward and state your name, sir.
Good evening, everyone. I was conscientious once I heard about, I'm Dave Janda, and I've been a citizen here in Grand Island for 50 years, coming this June. So I speak for all 56,000 of citizens here in Grand Island. And I was looking at last year, how many property tax insolvence there were. There's like four pages, five pages in the paper. And we increase our budget every year for our expenditures, so I like what he did as kind of explaining it all, but where are we cutting back some things? Now, when I was practicing over there on Fadley at the Park Place, was a old retirement home facility, well, every other day, there'd be a fire truck come up, and then an ambulance and a police car. And I can figure out why we have to have so many of this for a deceased person over there. You would think they could have one unit or, you know, less than that. Look at how many people are serving that are on the payroll. And then I look at, well, yesterday at SuperSaver, when I was driving by, here, the ladder, the fire truck ladder truck was in the parking lot there, this idle, you know, in the parking lot. So I wonder how efficiently we're becoming for this, getting all these expenditures out there, because there are people in this community that can't even pay their property taxes, and here, we're saying, wow, $2.4 million for this fire truck. It's amazing that we can build a fire station for 1.9, and we have, you know, 2.4 for one truck. And then you look at the city, I grew up on a farm, realizing that we use old trucks and everything, got them going in working condition and everything, and all the city equipment is so new. It's amazing that how we can keep funding all this. I appreciate it. Have a blessed evening.
Thank you, sir. We are adjourned, counsel.